Hey guys, welcome back to the YouTube channel! Oh my gosh, I'm just here saying I had the perfect setup. The music was playing, I just put on the candle, opened my books I'm about to study. And my dad calls. Which is like, okay, but like, the timing? We could work on it. But yeah, welcome back to the vlog, it's a uni vlog! Let's get into it. Let me go speak to the familia. I'm coming! Hello! What's up, vlog? My hair, I don't like it. I feel like, okay, all these cars. This uncle was really not interested in letting me go across a pedestrian crossing. Anyway. Um, I literally just walked my friend to the gate, not realizing that it's only 4 o'clock. And I only need to pick my stuff at 5. Meaning I have an hour here, still. So I'm going back to the library to go and edit the vlog for Valentine's Day! Would you probably watch by now, since I will post this first, or post it first? So tell me how was it? Galentine, first of all, tea, like, I don't know, should I spell the tea here, like? Cause like, the girls have sort of fallen apart. Only one of us, though. Because of a boy. Which is like, what the? Oh man. Men will always ruin things for the girls, always. Can always count on them to do that. But we're trying to, we'll see how that ends up, hopefully. I'd look back on this video, I'm like, wow, silly us. We just needed to get over ourselves and move on. But for now, the group chat has been abandoned. Unfortunately. Let me get in the library. But like, it was so excessive, so... It was a successful day on campus. I finished my Sudoku. And my word crossword. Oh my gosh, I'm going. I'm going. Okay, apparently I'm not done speaking. I just, a lot of people were walking, "What is me?" But, oh yes, it is empty! Yes! You see how empty that is? Love it, love it, love it. Anyway. Yeah, Sudoku, crossword. What else did we do? Word search. So, I mean, screw the classes. Bye guys, overall, a good day. Let me go edit the vlog. This is the outfit, guys, I'm not impressed. So if you're not impressed, that's fine, because I'm not impressed either. I just, I don't think I like these jeans anymore. Which is unfortunate, this top is like cutting in a real way. Vlog, let me not lie, I forgot about you. Only for today, though, because I did nothing today. I'm disappointed. I mean, I submitted my practical, did the practical test. So, nothing, I didn't like miss out on any deadlines, but like... No, but tomorrow I'll lock in. I woke up at half past 1. Can you tell I'm tired? I literally woke up and was like, "How did you die?" Like, "Did I die?" Cause why was I so sleepy? Anyway, like, oh my gosh, so much tea that I can't really say, but I'm like, ugh, people are weird. Like... When you're doing something, right? Like, don't you ever think, like, is what I'm doing, doesn't make sense? Like, objectively, like, do you think? Anyway. The reason I called you back here is because I'm getting ready for the cocktail party tomorrow. I know it's an academic thing, but like, I get to dress up. And I get to stunt in front of all the people I find hot in my degree. It's not really that many. But there are a couple. No, it's not even either people I find hot. It's just like, to, you know what? It's not even for the people I find hot. Not that I scratch that, scratch that. This is so that the degree knows that I may be an academic. I'm doing excite, like, math nerd, whatever. But get you a girl that can do both, because I'm about to show you what I look like. I look... Someone take me to jail because someone, rather, I need to file a complaint because someone stole my waist. Quiet, I just look at myself. The ops are gonna be mad! My ops are gonna be mad to see me tomorrow. Hold on to your hands! Because I look deadly. And I know you've seen me in this outfit, you have. But, ugh, this is a bit TMI. How deep am I about to go into this with you guys? But, yo, I really hope there are no boys who watch this channel. Cause it's gonna be real awkward, but like, you know what? I'm a girl, I go through all things. I don't know, I want to talk about my bra, but like, I don't know, that feels so strange. Do I do it? I might cut this part out. But it's like, I chose to go braless. But I didn't realize, the first time I wore it, I'm like, my bra kept on bothering me. Because it's supposed to be like a strapless. I just had an idea. I might make this like a complete strapless moment, but I'll get there. It's supposed to be like at least one shoulder off. And then I just slid my bra strap off, but it kept on like sliding up. So I decided to like just ditch the whole entirely, sorry. I'm copying that super trend of like, "Oh, is you cool?" Like, anyway, I just decided to ditch it completely, and now I look... At the symbol for womanhood, like... Let me show you what I'm talking about. Girl, like, I don't know why it's so dark, why is it so dark? I really don't know why it's so dark, but like, look at me. Like, where is my waist? Where is she? Where is she? Someone stole her, someone stole my waist! Someone stole her, like, let me stand properly. I know you see that, I know you see that. You see that! Let me try and make this a double or shoulder movements. Oh my, oh my. I nearly passed out from how hot I look. Do we do that? Or is that rather the shoulder that is supposed to be off the shoulder? Is it supposed to be like that? For some reason, I don't think so. Is it supposed to be like this? I don't know, I don't think so. Like... Let me put this little thing on. Like, you guys should tell me, like, do I wear it like this? Ah, I think I wear it like this. I don't know, something you learn about me. Something to know about me is I love my colors. Uh, my collarbone is my favorite feature, often my smile. I already love my smile. But my collarbones are close seconds, because I just, especially like when they're like, just... It's like, I feel like my collarbones for me are the equivalent of like, a lady's ankle in like Bridgerton times. It's like, just a little bit of skin. Tweaking. The whole point, right, is because I feel like... No one is gonna stunt like me, like, I'm looking around at all the people in my degree and I'm like, no one can do it like me. No shade. This is absolutely no shade to anyone in my degree, like, I love you guys down bad, I really don't. Especially for my friends, like, it's all love, but like... The excite kids really don't pull out like this. Like, I know I'm going to be the... On the fuck! I'm about to be the baddest bitch. The baddest girl on the block, that is about to be me. The pressure on my back. The stress. Oh my gosh. Like criminal, criminal, how good I look in this. And I know I'm about to be the best dressed. I just, I know it. I know it, because my personality... Long story short, what I'm trying to say is, math people don't really care to dress up. Also, I've seen, I've heard, like, obviously, that degree is gonna look cute and like, oh my gosh, stunning, like, they really look gorgeous, okay? Let me not be mean, let me not be a mean girl. But I don't think the rest of them care about dressing up the way I care about dressing up. Like, that's the part of me that makes me feel like a fraud in that degree, because it's like... I feel like I should have done like a social media degree or something, or something to do with like... Dressing up, fashion kind of thing. Not that I'm a fashion whiz, I don't know anything, but like, I do like to look good. I care about what I wear, I care about the way I look, I care about how I present myself to people, and... I don't know, I just don't think I share the same sentiments with the people in my degree, so I just know I'm about, they're about to be like... "Yara!" And I'm like, "I'm ready, stop, stop, stop." And I'm also really nice to people, so I know that people are gonna come up to me, or not come up to me, but in conversation, they're gonna be like... "Carrie looks so nice, you look so nice, you look gorgeous." And I'm just gonna be like, "Thank you, thank you." And I can already feel the stares, don't worry. You can stare, you can stare, take a picture, it'll last longer. Oh my gosh, let me stop yappingizing and get out of this dressing a bit. I'm so excited. Good morning, vlog! Ready to go, ready to go, ready to go! This is the outfit of the day, nothing serious. But I have my uni bag. And then I have my get ready with me bag! Yes, 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 yes. I'm sorry, I don't know what that was either. But let's be on our way, shall we? Whoop, whoop, let's go to campus, yay, I'm so excited to be here! My shaders! My shaders! I escaped from the clutches of Stuck! Hey, lol! Vlog, I know you see my makeup, like, it's looking very pasty there. But I show you, I look very grunged and chiseled, I just need to put on blush, but... Guys, I look so scrumptious! Smash, 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 smash! Just had to put my lip combo, and then... Zanzis! To say the least, what a waste of a good outfit. Face be hair done. Body tea. Is giving, why would it, like, me wanna be on Ozempic? Body tea, eager. Like, what a waste! Ugh, I'm like, I feel like a fraud, should I even be an actuary? Like, cause why was it just... It was literally a networking event, they said what they said it was gonna be, but I don't know, like, I'm leaving already? Like... I'm smart, but for what? But for what, like, do I really see myself? I don't know. This is giving, like, I look good. I look good. And I could feel that, because people kept on looking at me, and it's like, hmm, body tea, good, you know what I'm saying? For the beach, like, me wanna be in Ozempic. But, the problem lies in the fact, like... I was like, I didn't take photos. Only because there was no one to take photos of me, like, ugh! Like, not that I asked and someone said no, but it's like, these are not people I would ask to take photos of me. Not that there's, there's literally nothing wrong with them. Nothing wrong with them, it's just... Our types of social medias aren't the same, so our types of photos that we would require are not the same. To say the least, like, ah, I wish I was there with, like, I was there with my friends. Don't get me wrong, don't get it twisted, don't be shady, but I wish I was there with the girls! I think that was the problem. I think this is my first real experience at a, like, a professional event. And it's like... Girl, like, obviously, the goal is to become an actuary. Yeah, but like, after tonight, it's like... Boring! No, I'm joking, I'm joking, it was very intellectual and insightful, like, I was like, oh, tea, 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 cool, cool, cool! But it's like, I don't know, I think I just need to get used to the working world, because apparently this is what it's like. And I think my goal... If I do become an actor and go like the professional route of life, like, if things don't fall into place, otherwise... Speaking about you guys. Pushing me forward socially. Then, um, like, to an extent where I can like pursue it as a full-time career. Obviously, I'll have to be an actuary. And my goal will then be to balance the both. Cause like, I will literally... Myself. If... Like, all I do is go to work. Ah, no! No, but I mean, the thing is, discovery would be the perfect job, because they, I feel like, from what I learned today, they really balance it out. Like, the lady who was speaking to us, like, she had it all, she had it all, she did, but like... Discovery is also a bad bitch, like, you know, you're like, my league, I don't know if we're in the same league, and it's like... They did say, guys, don't ostracize yourself, don't feel like, you know... Your marks are not wherever they need to be, or you don't fit, or you would never get it, like, don't feel like that. Everyone has to start anywhere, and you can start like that in discovery, they have like entry level positions, blah, blah, blah. But like... You guys always say that, though, you guys just be saying that, like, I know people smarter than me, and I'm mature and confident enough to say that. Who, like, didn't get into, well, not, I, let me not get into it, but like... Who are not working at discovery, also because discovery knows she's Drake, so she takes 300 years to tell you you're in, so like... You know, everyone is telling you, and then if, imagine you mind everyone else and discovery also minds you, then it's like, a whole conundrum that you're in, but like... Yeah, I guess it was not a bad event, it's just my first time where, like, it was a purely social event, and I... Or as a purely professional event, and I look like a baddie. You see, like, I look professional, of course. I look a professional baddie, you know, so, it was me reconciling my baddie... Body tea with like, "Oh yeah, tell me more about your insurance policies." Tell me more about the banking side, and how you run your assets, and what the influence of people, you know, working out reduces their need to... Blah, 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 health, you make them better. Annuity, annuity, assurance, assurance. Probability, probability, statistics, statistics, tell me more about that, you know? Like, consigning those two. I'm working on it, but let me go home, I also went home early, like... I need to go home and go study. Bye! I'm back at home. Yay! What a boring, no, it's not boring, it's just... Could have been better. I looked too good for the hour. They would have just said, "Come and listen to us speak about our finish reward," and I would have shown up in a regular outfit. And then it would have been fine, you can speak for 2 hours, it's fine, but like, you told me to come dressed. And then I spent most of it sad. Like, I feel like my outfit was giving dates. Ugh, I think that's the problem, I think I just need to... I think the problem is I just need to go on a date, but I don't, I don't mean like... I haven't seen someone go on a date the way I wanna go on a date. And it's like, the problem is, like, this is the first date I'm talking about, which is kinda, like, it doesn't work, because I want my first date to be like... I'm dressed to the nines, like, you know how it is in the movie? With your first date, and they take you out to a dinner, like, tiny houses, and they're like... I mean, not a fancy, or a good restaurant doesn't translate to inexpensive restaurant, okay? But just like a very nice place where I can wear heels, a really pretty dress, do my makeup, my hair, and not feel like... Overdressed, do you know what I mean? Like, not that I felt overdressed today, I did not feel any such thing, just like... Felt like I wasted it. Let me talk to TikTok for a while. Then I'm gonna wipe off my make, I'm gonna go eat and wipe off my... Wipe off my makeup. Like, oh, my lips. My makeup ain't down, too. I really do think the issues, I just, I need a boyfriend. If you are my family and you're watching this, this is all jokes. All laughs, it's all hearsay, I will deny it at every turn. You should bring it up IRL. So is it, don't make it weird. But, I don't know. Cause I just need someone to appreciate me in this outfit, which people did. Which people did. The girlies are all, everyone I spoke to was like, "I didn't see, you look too good." Those are my friends. You know, like... I need my... To be like, "You are the..." Bane of my existence, and the object of all my dis... I mean, we're not making it crazy Bridgerton vibes, but like, you know what I'm saying? Like, I need someone to burn for me in this outfit! Let me go talk to TikTok. Hey, vlog! Hey, vlog, what's up, vlog? What is good morning? I have two, not one, but two class tests this morning. I won at 8:30. I won at 11:30. Anyway, it's also English. Two class tests, 8:30 and 11:30. I'm shivering my timbers. I'm here so early to study, it's quarter 2:07. Wish me luck. I don't know how aesthetic that clip of going through the tence that was. Stressy. You know, as I was saying, my two class tests. I have a financial mathematics. Sorry, I don't know what's in this room, but... Ah, you can't see, why can't I see so clearly in the reflection and you can't? But, I have a financial mathematics class today. And that, no, I actually have a financial engineering. Why am I doing an engineering module, modular, you ask? Same, like, why am I doing this module? Like, you can't just get a financial in front of it and expect me to say, "Oh." No. Let the engineering kids do it, get somebody else to do it. Yeah, financial engineering and financial mathematics. Let's go study. Good morning, vlog! I've literally been sleeping in my car since 7:30. Ugh, it's Friday, I'm so tired, I'm like, early, like... And I, I think I slept early, I can't remember. I didn't even put on my lip combo, I just put lip gloss and I'm calling it a day. I didn't even put on my lip combo, I just put lip gloss and I'm calling it a day. But yeah, let's go to the library, I only have a class at nine thirty. It's twenty to nine, so. I don't even know if I'm going to a class, to be honest. I think I might, if I go, it'll be so that I can like sit in a constructive environment to make notes, but not to listen to whatever he has to say. Cause I don't think he teaches in a way that I can understand, so. Just giving self-study, boop, boop. Yeah. Score, 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 score. Guys, I've just got ten chips. I found myself an M D, not freezing, not hot either, lateral. Lateral, lateral, where I can literally watch my episodes of Abbott Elementary and Criminal Minds. I'm afraid. The chips were. Salt was not so thick. But. Welcome to my spa. I'm here to pick up my sister's cake. For her eighteenth birthday, crazy, I know. Um, yeah, in the February vlog, you guys saw, birthday's on the sixteenth of February, so you'll see. We celebrated it, but now she's having a party with her friends. With her friends and her friends only, that we're not even invited to. Literally, all I'm doing is we're just dropping off, and that's it. But I'm here to pick up her cake and then pick her up and then take her to the house at which they're having the birthday, so. Let's see what this cake looks like, because this is my first impression, never seen the cake before. So I had to go back to the car to call her, to ask her what her cake looked like, so, sorry. Okay, so now I know what it looks like. Mind you, you guys know I'm looking for headphones. I asked this man, I went to the first shop and they're like, nah, it's three hundred, I'm like. It could be better, it could be better, left, next shop, eight fifty, I said, get serious and get somebody else to do it. Cause I'm not the one that's annoying the three. But anyway, I now know what the cake looks like, so I'm here to pick it up. Anyway, they seem to be taking their time with this cake to find it. But yeah, you should have seen my face and that guy was like seven fifty and I said, oh. And he pointed to the smallest box, I said, oh. Do you have a cheaper one? He's like, yeah, and I'll give you like seven fifty lowest. I said, get serious, get. Serious, cause what do I look like? Me, what do I look like buying a seven hundred rand headphones? As much as I'm aware, I should, I really shouldn't be like recording myself right now, I'm literally in a crisis and I'm about to cry. I'm literally about to cry, I don't know why, I'm actually holding it like pretty well, mind you, I'm facing oncoming traffic. Because I'm on the wrong side, because I had to turn away from the toll gate, because I didn't bring. Okay, I'll just, just wanted to see my face. Hey vlog, remember when I was crying in my car? No, that was bad, that was bad, like you guys didn't see, but after that I swiftly burst into tears, I'm like, I am going to die. On the side of the road, like I'm literally gonna die in Montana, like, ugh. Yo, I was like, I'm finished, no data, no airtime. No cash. I was in uh like a one-way road on the highway. Or like the off-ramp to the highway, like by the toll gate, so I couldn't just drive up and go to an ATM, because like. It's oncoming traffic, like, I'm so scared that people are not gonna be like, oh, she's obviously in trouble, like, they're just gonna ram into me. So I literally parked on the side of the road, facing oncoming traffic and cried. I called, tried, please call it, guys, my life. Uh, no, I've literally been through it, like. Wow, today was the worst day ever. The only good thing that happened to me today was that chip, those chips. Literally the only good thing that happened to me today. I can't believe I was literally spending the majority of my Friday crying in my car. Friday. I'm so pitiful, so pitiful. But yeah, eventually, like an hour later. I was like, it started raining, it's when it started raining and and it was getting dark. And I'm like, I li- like, this is not sustainable, like, this is not sustainable, like. That something's gotta give, okay, so I literally went back to the toll gate and I begged that guy, I said, please. I swear on my life, I will pay you back as soon as I get home, I will do the cash send or whatever the send is. I will pay you, I promise, please. He's like, are you sure, you sure, you sure, sure? Like, on one hand, I'm like, George was eight rand. Yo, begging for an eight rand, guys, what is? You know, the funny thing is, I've always had an emergency twenty in my phone case. It's when I got this phone, which was last year. That I stopped doing it, and now, the one, I never used it before that, I never had an emergency for the emergency twenty. But the one time, bro, the one time. Also, yeah, I was saying, like, on one hand, I'm like, shame, I get why, he's like, people say that, probably say that to him all the time, like, I'll pay you, I'll pay you, I'll pay you. And then they disappear, like, especially if you don't pay them on the spot, like, they'll just disappear. But, oh yeah, the problem was that. I couldn't go through the toll gate, because I didn't have cash and I had planned on paying with my card, but apparently they only take credit card. Like, first of all, where does it say that? Nowhere. It says cash or card, like, you guys misled me and it's your fault. But like, you're not willing to help me, you're weird, you're so weird, but anyway, so I couldn't go through, anyway. So I came back an hour later and I'm like, king, after standing on the side of the road. Like, if you know Montana, like. You know, going, leaving Montana, like, I'd come in with my sister, I was leaving now to come home. That, that's toll gates. I was literally on the side, literally, uh like double trafficking. With the A C on, cause I was about to pass out, like, crying. Anyway, I eventually come back out of mine, beg, please. So anyway, I was saying, on one hand, I'm like, yeah, I'm sure people say that and disappear. But on the other hand, it was eight rand, you'll be fine. Like, I know if it was me, I'd be like, girl, don't stress, like, especially if you can see me crying. I was like, you know, don't even worry about it, like, you don't have to pay me back or nothing, it's literally a brand, cause I had the six rand change from when I had come in. Cause my sister, cause I didn't, the thing is, I didn't know I was going to Montana. You see, this is the thing with these. Last minute things that you guys are sending me to do, I didn't know I was going to Montana, otherwise. I don't think I would have thought of it, because I don't really go to Montana, I don't think of toll gates, literally. It's the only place I know of. That I go, like, that you need toll gates. That's why, I hate that place. I'm sorry, like, I know. Hmm, I'm not sorry, actually. Sorry to my friends who live there, but I hated there, like, literally. Ugh, I hate going there, anyway. So, like, it was eight rand, eight rand, George, like. I would have been like, girl, go ahead, don't worry about it, like, it happens to the best of us, like, even the first time I was there, when he told me like. You need a credit card, I said, huh? I said, what? A credit card, and then the lady behind me, she got tired and she's like, she came, literally came out of a car. Shame, she was sweet, but like impatient, but she's like, no, don't worry, I'll just pay for me, myself and this, like, and me. So she said she'd pay for herself and me, and she came with a debit card too, so. We were both in problems, oh, she's like, no, I'll just pay for the both of us, and he's like, sorry, Q- queen. No can do, you can't even pay for yourself. So I don't know what she ended up doing, she literally drove into oncoming traffic, like, she sped off. And I'm like, mm-mm, that's not my expertise level, I know I always am Dominic Turtle, but I'm literally, I'm literally Ramsey. Except I can drive, but I'm no Dominic Turtle, anyway. Like, no one ever put Ramsey in charge of driving, do you know what I mean? Anyway, um, yeah, I got home. And I paid him fifty rand, because cash then, apparently the minimum is fifty rand, which I think he knew. So he literally made forty-two rand. Anyway, came home, told my mom. And I was moody, had cake and ice cream, which helped, it did. And then crashed on my couch, I'm literally downstairs, um. I was watching Bridgerton first, then I got, whatever, then we had visitors, my cousin came, and. Wow, like, people are growing up, tell me why this kid, I used to carry him, I was the one who was, like, I literally was like, maybe. Eight or older, or much older. Like, maybe like ten, when he was born. Like, so I remember his birth, I mean, I was in there when I was born, but like. I remember coming to the house for the first time and they're like, oh my gosh, baby X is born, and I'm like, oh, baby X, I was carrying baby X. And now baby X is in grade eight, guys. He's like, oh yeah, you're in your twenties or whatever, and I'm like, yeah, I'm twenty, twenty-two, and he's like, damn, I said, ah. I said, that was not necessary, he said, you're old, I said, don't say that. Don't you remember when we used to be like this? Because you were a literal child, I'm so happy I didn't tell him that, because like, we were literally sat here arguing about what show accurately, like, when you think of. Cartoon Network, which show is the representative of Cartoon Network? I said, Perovio, the only answer, Benton. Benton was the foundation of Cartoon Network. Obviously, I'm not saying it was the best show, I'm not saying. It was its only show, but like, come on, A- American Dragon. Amer- which, mind you, when I speak about, no one knows, it's like, y'all didn't watch American Dragon, that man was. That man was. Fine. Fine. American, so was Benton, that's probably why I like Benton. Ben was hot, okay, I think it was more aura, cause he was a cartoon character, but Ben was hot. So was American Dragon, I can't remember what, maybe like Zack or something bad, like, he had black hair with like. A green outline, like. Describing it, it doesn't sound like that hard, but like, he was this Asian kid with like, black hair, like, dark eye, like, he was fine. He was fine, but anyway, they were the good shows. And they're actually talking about Regular Show. What? Regular Show, I mean, I'm sure every, like, a lot of people like it, but like. I don't think, like, if Cartoon Network had to be like. This was us, I don't think they would pick Regular Show over Benton, like, I was really, we were trying to say, oh my gosh, you know, reminisce about Cartoon Network. And they're talking about Amazing World of Gumball, Adventure Time, and Regular Show, and I'm like, guys. What about Courage the Cowley Dog? What about Benton? What about American Dragon? And then you're like, they literally basically said, get rid of this guy. Get this boomer out of here, is basically what they told me, cause he said, his brother, his older brother is my age. He's like, yo, you're just like him, because when I'm talking about shows, he's out here calling these things from the two thousands, and I'm like, but that's. I realized it was born, I think it was born in twenty-ten, ah. No, I'm lying, he wasn't born in two twenty-ten, it must have been later, twenty-ten, I was in grade one. Yeah, I think he was born later. I was outnumbered, guys, cause I was also sitting with Cassidy, who's only turning seventeen, like, she's also a child, like, ish. I said, yo, you guys won't get it, you don't get it, but anyway, now I'm watching Criminal Minds, so life is, life is looking good right now. I had the worst moment of my life today, but I also had pretty good ones, so. Also watched Squid Games, two episodes of it, like, it was, it was interesting, it was interesting, and if. We decided to continue watching, I wouldn't be mad, but I don't think I'll ever find it in me to. If find it in me to go and like seek out an episode, nah. Nah, I'll just care about it, like, I just, there's some shows that I'm like, you know, fair, like, you're not a bad show, but I don't wanna get invested. I don't want to, cause it's like. Anyway, let me go, bye, see you probably tomorrow, toodaloo. I'm telling you, but it's fine, it's, it's, I can't, I can't fight it, say hi to the camera, Sunday vlog. Look at, let's get into the outfits, outfit of the day, where is the dress from? Uh, you have to specify. No, it's Nordstrom. Yes, you have to say Nordstrom, Nordstrom is the expensive one, Nordstrom rack. Period, it's a, yes, even the shoes. Get into it, period. I mean, you wanna do an outfit of the day? Ah, yeah? Okay.
This jacket is Cassidy's from.
Okay.
This top.
Yeah. Cool, 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 love it. America, yeah, that's all you need to say? Shoes, get weight, zoom, 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 zoom.
From mainland Africa.
What is the brand? What is the brand? What are these?
Because my campus is from.
What, say it?
The campus is.
Period, period.
Then my, yeah, this one just came.
Classes from spectacle someone somewhere. Period, sponsor us.
Yeah, and then from America, from five, five men below shop.
Period.
And then from Sudan.
Oh, yeah, you're branded, let's make sure they can read it, just in case you get lost and they don't know who you are. Where is it from?
From Kenya, I think.
Oh, very nice, very nice. Oh, period, it's giving custom, custom, exactly, for you and you alone. What? Very, very nice. Period, my commitment to serve. Cloak it. Here, yeah, go that way. Okay, outfit of the day?
Outfit of the day, this is Kendrick's jacket from, I think, H and M.
Okay.
These pants are from H and M as well, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I'm wearing this shirt, this shirt is from.
America.
America.
Period, cloak it, cloak it, cloak it, stop walking, cause you're gonna pop into someone.
Shoes are also from America, clock it.
Probably old, but.
Clock it, clock it, clock it, and then.
That's it, that's it, do mine.
I think it's dark on the side. Okay, shirt is mommy's. Skirt is from Mister Price. She's also Mister Price. Come back from my other start.
Body on a budget.
Body on a budget, period, and then earrings, I'm not sure, sorry, no. And then this is a gift, and I think that's it, bye.
Hey vlog, what's up, what's up, what's up? Um, okay, so we're at Menland. Technically, we're here to look for dresses for my sister's M D. Which is like crazy, what do you mean, my M D was last year, right? Anyway, we're looking for dresses for her, and then I'm also looking for a jacket for myself, so hopefully I do.
I'm fine, thank you.
Hopefully I find something, yeah, for myself. It would look nice. I really like this dress, guys. Also, this blue one is really nice. It's giving body, addy, 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 but this one, I really, I always have me a cute princess card.